Hey, everybody. John, are we ready to go? Okay, welcome, everybody, to the Newport School Board meeting of March ninth, two thousand twenty-three. Go ahead and call the meeting to order. Tim?
Tim here.
Bert?
Bert Spalding Senior here.
Steve?
Steve Morris here.
Our student rep, Steven?
Steven, I'm right here.
And Jenna Darling here. Will you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Okay. Adjustments to the agenda. I would like to add Bus Barn discussion to... I'm gonna make that A, please, if possible. Donna, do you have anything to add?
Yes, I'd like to add Future Farmers of America.
Okay.
They're looking to go to the state convention.
Okay, so why don't we add that right after the school lunch increase? Any other adjustments from the board? Bert?
I'd like to see us, assuming that we don't have a lot of public and etc., that we do a non-public.
Somewhere before, let's say, before the new hires. And we keep NCTV here for when we return, because we will be announcing a decision.
Okay.
Now, that is one person saying that.
Right. What... How do you want to go in or non-public?
We're going in under the D that we have.
The D that we have. Okay.
All right, I'm looking at it as we do the first part, and then we do this, go in and finish the second.
Go in at the conclusion of the public session. Okay. Okay, so just to restate those before we take a vote, I would like to add Bus Barn discussion as A. The FFA will add after the school lunch increase. And then we will go into new, sorry, we will go into non-public before new hires, and we will come back with a decision. We would go into non-public under ninety-one dash A colon three, Roman numeral two, D. All right, any other adjustments? Need a roll call vote for those? Tim?
Tim here, aye.
Bert?
Bert Spalding Senior, aye.
Steve?
Steve Morris, aye.
And Jenna Darling, aye. Got all that, Maura? Okay, perfect. All right, that brings us to public comment. I have nobody signed up here in person. Anybody online? Okay, with that, I'm gonna go ahead and bring public comment to a close. That brings us to approval of the public minutes of February twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three. Is there a motion on those minutes?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Okay, seeing, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? State? Thank you very much. Approval of non-public minutes of February twenty-third. Is there a motion?
I did not receive a copy.
I don't see it in the packet either, so.
Okay. So you didn't receive a copy. Did anybody else not receive a copy, copy the table for the next meeting?
Mine comes in a packet, and I get it earlier than that, so just a little.
Yours could be email, with the email.
Oh, okay.
Anyone else that wants to...
I have mine. Well, I wrote it, so I'm good.
You want my...
I will move that we tabled the non-public minutes of February twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three until the next meeting. Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna abstain.
Opposed and Bert abstained. Okay, Steven, you're up. Oh, okay. I thought you had more.
Firstly, student counselors holding their annual dodgeball tournament Friday, April twenty-fourth at six PM. There's gonna be teams of eight students with a faculty coach. We've got teams such as Paula's Piranhas joining us. Hopefully, it's gonna be a big tournament this year. Last year, we had, what, seven teams, eight teams? It was a lot of fun, and spectators are welcome this year with COVID being mostly our past. Faculty, it's two dollars each, and for the public, it's three dollars, and refreshments will be sold at the game. So over vacation, the varsity cheer team competed at Astro Blast and the state preliminary competition. They finished eighth place this year, which is an improvement from last year. It was a great experience for everyone there, and we're hoping to improve again next year. I hadn't planned to mention this, but you mentioned FFA has their states coming up. I don't have dates for all of these, but HOSA has their states. I believe Skills USA is in a couple weeks. FBLA is coming up in two weeks. So there's a lot of state competitions coming up for our students. I'm going to the FBLA one. I'm excited for that. I'm also going to the Band Allstate. Me and Bella Osgood are going the last weekend of this month. So lots of state competitions going on. And last thing here, while I'm on the topic of band, there's not one, but two concerts next week. Next Thursday, the sixteenth, six-thirty, at Stevens High School, its second annual Band Fest. This is the first one that Newport's participated in. There's Unity, Newport Middle and High School, Stevens High School, and Claremont Middle School, for a total of a hundred and seventy-five students that supposedly at one point were fitting all of us on that stage. I'm waiting to see how it's gonna be done. But that Friday night, and this is the one I'm personally looking more forward to, we've got our third annual Coffee House Show. Eighteen student performances, along with one from Mr. Stewart. Donations are gonna fund our Great East trip in May, and that is Friday night next week, the seventeenth, at six PM at the Opera House. That's all I got today.
Yes, go ahead, Tim.
So FFA is doing a pancake breakfast on Saturday, and it's, yeah, so can you get tickets at the door?
I would assume so.
Well, I've been assuming all week, staying out on my show, and I said I'd confirm it, so I'm just gonna say that Steven just confirmed it.
There's also a basketball game tomorrow night.
There is, right? Lots going on.
It looks like we might have somebody.
A coach is here.
We're seeking to confirm the pancake.
We'll get back to that.
The basketball game starts at six?
Six-thirty, and it's Students versus Faculty, and...
We said six.
There's a lot of smack talk going around already, and it'll be a good time, I'm sure. The bragging rights are really, we all seek the bragging rights, whether it's dodgeball or the...
Thank you.
And tickets for tomorrow night for the basketball game are two dollars?
I believe it's two dollars.
Two dollars for adults and one dollar for students, and there will be concessions as well. Halftime show.
Did you get that, John? Was that two dollars for, okay.
We will confirm the pancake breakfast. Thank you, Steven.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to high school discipline presentation. Yes.
Pancake breakfast information.
So Shannon Martin and Sarah Fisher here with me today. Shannon is the principal. Sarah is the assistant principal of the high school. They're here tonight to present behavior and attendance at the high school. Just before they start, I just wanted to let you know that next month, the presentation will be from the middle school and the elementary school.
Do you mind if I just give you a little? She has no business, but I just wanna say, because this is her first position as an assistant principal in any school, I could say that. And she did a really amazing job, I think, of trying to not only fit into our procedures in Newport, but really try to expand them. And that's been awesome to work with her. But the report that she's putting forth to you guys today is a little different from ones we've done in the past. If you watch some of the discipline reports, I actually think this one might be a little more user-friendly, so we're looking forward to your thoughts and feedback on it. Because I know we had a spreadsheet before that kind of went on for days. And so Sarah figured out how to kind of navigate our Power School system, and I just gotta give you some kudos. But she, this is all her, like, she's gonna show off some good stuff here, so thank you, guys.
Thank you.
So, again, this is just an overview. It's pretty much straight data. I will be able to break down some of it and give you a little bit more information, but as Shannon said, if there's something specific that you're looking for that I didn't include and can include at our year-end report, please let me know. I would be happy to take any feedback that you have. So this data shows the information to date. Mind you, this was from a couple weeks ago. The snow messed up the original date. But it's mostly basically semester one data, a little bit into the beginning of semester two. It was, the data was gathered using Power School and Who Knew It, which is one of the add-ons that we use for data with Power School. At the end of the year, I will give you more comparative data from this year to last year. But right now, this is just some raw data on what we have for this year. So when information needs to be logged or recorded, what we do is we go into Power School and do what's called a log entry. And that can be from anything from contacting a parent to recording that there's been a behavior incident, anything that we just need to keep record that has happened. So in our behavior side of that, we have three different tiers for behavior. Tier one is more the classroom pieces that the teachers deal with. Tier two is when those get a little bit more for teachers to deal with, and they need us to help them. And then tier three is your major infractions. So this year, we've had four hundred and ninety-five tier one logs so far, eighty-seven tier two, and twenty-eight tier three, to total six hundred and ten log entries just for discipline for this so far. So if we move on, I'm gonna break down what these each are. Tier one can be anything from being late to class, swearing in class, not being where you're supposed to be, not having a pass. It can be any kind of disrespect, anything like this. This is straight from the handbook. Just a little bit of a description of what tier one could include. These, again, are behaviors that mostly we deal with on the spot. You redirect a student, you talk to them privately in the hallway, you move a student's seat, you take a phone away, whatever it is. But those are the more the classroom, common areas, cafeteria, just on the spot, you deal with it and move on. These are usually low level and intensity. They're non-threatening, something that you just deal with every day in your classroom, but it's not a huge issue. Some kinds of interventions that teachers may take are things like a warning, a loss of privilege, detention, calling home, that kind of thing. So for our tier ones by grade level, we have had forty-six students who were issued, who have had some kind of tier one infraction, that were ninth graders, and that was a hundred and eighty-one of those tier ones. Tenth graders, there were forty-one students, adding up to a hundred and ninety-two of the incidents. Juniors, there were sixteen students that had a total of seventy-eight tier one log entries. And seniors, again, sixteen students with forty-four log entries for those sixteen students. Of those tier one, I looked at how many had five or more of those tier one log entries. There were fourteen students in the ninth grade that had five or more. There were twelve tenth graders. For the juniors, there were four students that had five or more tier one log entries, and there were only two seniors that had five or more log entries. Does anybody have any questions about tier one and what that is or anything?
I would just like to say that it's nice to see the numbers go down as they progress through your career and learn and knowledge you go through taking.
So tier two, again, these are some of the categories that are in the tier two stuff. You know, kids goofing off in the parking lot in their cars, bus issues, again, defiance and refusal. Safety can fall into a few different things. It can be anything from misuse of tools or something like that, anything that could cause a safety issue. Tier two can be just a pattern of tier one that isn't resolving and has gone to the point where the teacher intervention isn't being effective, and administrators need to help out. These behaviors usually interfere with the safety or the learning in a classroom. It can be harmful or threatening in nature, and it does warrant an administrator stepping in. Sometimes, some options that we have for interventions can, again, be warnings and detentions, calling a parent. It can be referrals to our SST team, which look at the whole picture of what's going on with the student and make recommendations for future or further intervention.
What does SST stand for?
Student Support Team. And that's a group of administrators, guidance counselors, special ed case managers, and different things like that. It can also be ISI in-school intervention or out-of-school suspension for tier two stuff, depending on the severity.
Do you want to know what the SAP is?
Oh, SAP is the Student Assistance Professional. She is one of our counselors on staff that... She, she does a lot of different things, but she does know a lot about substance misuse. And we offer her assistance with students who have had infractions with vaping or that kind of thing. We sometimes offer her counseling sessions as part of their intervention. But a lot of times, the kids start talking to her and really like her, because she is a very easy person to talk to, and then they just continue, which is a great thing, too. So she sees quite a few of our students for different reasons, and it's not just, it doesn't have to just be related to substance misuse.
Sarah, can you draw the...
Yes, of course.
I just want to know that SAP is a grant on COVID that we receive. We also, when we worked on the grant, we requested more information, and they just hired an SAP for the middle school. So we will have one that will work in the middle school as well.
Yeah, she's here three days, or the high school SAP, I think.
She's been shared middle and high. I think the nature of it is she gets a lot of high school clientele for the substance use. But she does other things like healthy relationships and decision-making and things like that. So it'll be nice to have someone specific to middle school.
They just want you to stand up there.
I'm sorry. Oh, I was okay. I was okay. All right.
But right now, the high school SAP, Ms. Loesby, she's here three days, so we would love her.
The other one is starting at the end of this one.
And our SAP is also on our student support team, our SST team, so, you know, it's, we meet weekly. So it's wonderful to have that group of professionals looking at the whole kid.
So with tier two broken down by grade, we had seventeen students who had tier two log entries, and those resulted in thirty-one of the actual incidences that were written up in Power School. For our sophomores, our tenth graders, we again had seventeen students, and that was twenty-eight of the log entries. Our juniors, we had eight students resulting in seventeen of the incidences. And our seniors were six students with eleven of the incidences. So we had a total of forty-eight students who had tier two log entries, resulting in eighty-seven incidences. Of those, I figured these were a little more severe, so even having more than one wasn't so great. So I looked at who had two or more of these incidences. And the ninth graders, only five of those students, again, it was seventeen students total, five of them had two or more. The tenth graders of the seventeen, again, five had two or more. The eleventh graders of the eight that had tier two, only one of them had two or more. And of the seniors of the six, two of them had two or more. Specifically, I just broke down some of the topics that are, when we put in a tier, a discipline referral, we categorize what that incident was. And some of the specific incident types that we have for tier two are defiance and refusal. There were twenty-four defiance and refusal log entries. There were nineteen disrespect entries, eighteen disruption, and forty-two safety incidences. Questions on tier two? Anything? No? So tier three, these are the heavy hitters. These are everything from illegal substances or paraphernalia, assault, harassment, you know, the bigger incidences that we deal with. When we have a tier three behavior, that's considered a significant violation of our code of conduct, and it severely interferes with other safety and learning, and it could have imminent harm to others. It's definitely threatening by nature, and it could fall under not only our school statutes, but state statutes as well. They warrant immediate administrative assistance. This isn't something that a teacher's going to deal with. This is something that administrators are going to deal with right away and contact parents right away. Most students involved in tier three offenses will be removed from school through an in-school suspension or a out-of-school suspension. Some of the interventions that we use, we, like I said, we could suspend students for up to ten days. We sometimes have parent and student reentry meetings, depending on the situation. That could involve an administrator and a school counselor. Anytime we confiscate fake paraphernalia or drug paraphernalia, anything like that, that's turned over to the SRO. If we have any concerns about violence or safety, that's reported to the SRO and the police. And then chronic disruptive student behavior that can't be corrected within our school standard interventions are referred to the superintendent. So of our tier three incidences by grade, we had nine ninth graders who had ten incidences. We had, for our sophomores, we had five students with ten, I'm sorry, eight log entries for tier three. We had four eleventh graders with four incidences, and five twelfth graders with six incidences. For this one, again, I thought this one was a little bit more severe, well, not even a little, it was more severe. So I looked again at if anybody had repeat offenses, so anyone who had two or more. There was one ninth grader who had more than one tier three incident. There were two tenth graders. There were not any juniors who had more than one offense, and there was only one senior who had more than one tier three offense. Breaking it down by the types, we had three log entries for assault. We had ten log entries for fighting and physical aggression. We had twenty-seven log entries for illegal substances, eight for verbal threats or verbal assault, one for vandalism, and five for weapons. That being said, I want to, that doesn't mean that these were all separate incidences. If we find a cluster of students in the bathroom vaping, that's, however many students there are, that's how many vaping log entries go in. So it may be one situation with multiple log entries for that single incident. Breaking this down to some of the interventions we have specifically to suspensions. We've issued thirty-four in-school suspensions at the time of this data poll. That does not include the in-school suspensions that we issue as part of our out-of-school suspension that I'll talk about in a second. This is just issuing a straight, you have a day of in-school suspension as your intervention. So we had eleven students issued in-school suspension that were ninth graders, tenth graders, twelve. Tenth graders had in-school suspension so far this year, three juniors, and eight seniors. Now, of those, we had two freshmen had more than one in-school suspension. One sophomore had more than one. It's okay. I'm just giving a little bit more information. One of those sophomores had more than one day of in-school suspension. Two seniors were issued two in-school suspensions, and then, like I said, everybody else just had one. Okay?
Sarah, can you walk through what higher test consists of?
Sure. So the easiest thing I can, so like, if a student leaves school without permission, if they, if they choose to go get lunch and don't tell us, they're gonna do that.
So what is the law for the student?
Okay, yeah, so, so we would issue an in-school suspension. So what happens is they come in in the morning, they, there's an area in the main office with some desks set up. I email their teachers and let them know that the student has an in-school suspension, and any work that can be done while the student is there should be either emailed to them, or the teachers usually, most of the time, the teachers just come right down and talk to the kids and let them know what they could be working on in that time. Myself or Ms. Cattrupi, the student support specialist, talk to the students about why they're in there and their decision-making process, and how maybe we can make better decisions and not be an in-school suspension in the future. If they have a counseling session or they see one of the counselors, they can, they talk to their guidance counselor, they may talk to Ms. Loesby.
There's a few, there's a lot we do depending on the situation. I'll come up and behave for this one. So we also, if a student has related service providers that they would normally see, that is, they still have access to them, so they can still get in those sessions if it were a situation like with vaping, which I know you get to some of that later. But the in-school day would be the day they would be introduced to the SAP counselor. So just to make that introduction and schedule their first session, we really use it as a reentry back into our building. So we've, you've gotten your consequence, you did something bad, but you know what? Tomorrow's a new day. How can we set you up for success coming back in, if that makes sense?
What are they allowed to use when they're in school suspension?
So we, do you want to take this? You mean device-wise? So we allow our students obvious access to their Chromebooks, because a lot of our work is communicated email-wise or in Google Classroom with the teachers. We do allow students to listen to music quietly. They're not allowed to be sitting there playing on their phone, but I know that the phone is often used for music. So you'll see some of that. We have allowed students to use phones for calculators, but usually they need a graphing calculator, so that's what we'll do more often than that. It's really more case by case. Did I answer that where you're, okay. So one of the things that I know, if you were to walk through our ISI space, not knowing the circumstances for the individual students, it might very well, it's not the traditional, I'm seated... it might very well, it's not the traditional, I'm seated, I'm silent, I'm doing nothing but what's in front of me. We're obviously providing them services. There's teachers coming and going to meet with the student. And we, in addition to what could be going on with an in-school intervention student, we have other students who as part of their behavioral plans with us might have a break pass. So those students will come in, I don't know if anyone's seen, we have sand timers on the desk. So they come in, they're five-minute timers. Rather than explode and lose your cool and do something that's going to get you a negative consequence in the building, we work with those specific students about coming to our space, in the in-school suspension space. They come in, they've already got an existing pass system. We've worked out with the teachers, so we know where they are, they're accounted for and safe. They flip the timer, they take a seat. Now, sometimes they don't all sit right away, because they're trying to come down from what they're working on. But there's a lot we do in that one space at any given moment.
And some of it may just be kids coming to talk to us for whatever reason and needing to wait a minute to step into my office and conference with myself or Ms. Martin. Sometimes it's kids that we requested to be down there that were, that are waiting. So it's kind of a mixed-use space. So we have the kids with our ISI, but then we also have kids, it's kind of our waiting area to talk to us as well.
And I, you could probably imagine, they don't all coordinate when they come to visit us. So they tend to either all show up at the same time or not show up at the same time. So depending on the day and the hour, the minute, it serves many purposes for us. If they're doing well in that space and we find that, for example, we have some present-day activity that's really overloading the system, so if I had, say, three people in my in-school suspension, and we discover a group vaping in the bathroom, for example, that's a lot of students in one space at one time. And so we do have our refocus space that we run through with Ms. Cody up in our media center. So if I have a student who we've already, say, processed, they've come in for in-school, we've processed their behavior, we've set them up with work, and I know that they've done well, we can send them up to Ms. Cody, and as long as behaviorally they're still meeting their expectations there, it's just alternative location to continue their reentry back, if that makes sense. So on occasion, we do that. And, or to separate personalities, you know, if they shouldn't be seated in the same space at the same time. So that works well.
Are in-school suspensions, are they allowed to do extracurricular activities?
So with in-school susp, do you want that, sorry?
No.
I can take that. I can take that. So I've worked it out with Mr. Miller about this. So when it's an in-school suspension day, students are permitted to attend extracurricular. They cannot participate in. So if, for example, there was a game and it was, and an athlete that was suspended. If it's an in-school suspension on the same day, then they may go with their team, but they may not suit up and play. And frankly, what we have found is that has a pretty profound impact on those students, so.
So apart, so that kind of leads into the next slide, which is out-of-school suspension. When we issue an out-of-school suspension, we may issue a five-day out-of-school suspension. However, that fifth day is in, in-school, and that's not included in these in-school numbers. So every one of these out-of-school suspensions included one day of in-school suspension. And as Shannon was saying, we use that as a transition to help the kids enter back into the school. Again, we talk to them about the work that they were supposed to have been doing while they were out of school. Did they need any help with it? Do we get their teachers to come down and talk to them and make sure they're ready to go back to class the following day? If part of that suspension included counseling with the SAP coordinator, as Shannon said, they meet with the coordinator, they meet with guidance if that's called for. All of those things that we talked about are part of that transition day as well. Okay? So for out-of-school suspensions, we had eighteen freshmen who had an out-of-school suspension, twelve tenth graders, seven juniors, and eight twelfth graders. Of those, there were...
Oh, sorry, Bryn, I'm sorry, I said good job to Bryn.
Eight freshmen had two or more out-of-school suspensions. But there were only two out-of-school suspensions for all of, like, only... How do I say this? I'm messing up my numbers. From tenth to twelfth graders, all of them had less than two, I think. That's what my number, I didn't leave myself good notes, I'm sorry. I wrote this a couple of weeks ago, and now I don't remember. The freshmen had more. They're figuring their stuff out still. The rest of them did better.
Which I would say is pretty normal for a high school. Freshmen usually have our highest numbers of incidents in behavior intervention.
They're transitioning and figuring out high school life.
Correct.
Okay. Now, of our communication logs, so when we do a log entry, we, we first describe it as either discipline or communication. We had just over a hundred, one thousand nine hundred log entries just for communications. So these are anything from calling a parent or a meeting that was had or any kind of non-disciplinary conversation you have with a student, whether it's guidance or logging that someone came in to talk to me and, you know, needed to, you know, just talk to me about something. So I think, I think that shows the good side of these log entries, that we do have a lot of these positive interactions with students and parents beyond just the discipline stuff.
There are also really, communication logs become very critical for our SST team. So it's an opportunity, like, if we learn that, you know, they recently lost a grandparent. You know, we might have a teacher that said, you know, I sat with so-and-so, they were really having a hard time because of this loss, and that might show up in a log entry. So when we're reviewing that student as an SST team, that can be part of, okay, you know, if we're seeing a change in grades, ooh, you know, this, look what just happened. You know, sometimes they don't all call and let the school know what's going on in a student's personal life. So it's a great way for us to know what our teachers are hearing and experiencing with our students. So even if we're not knocking on their door in that moment, we still have an idea of what, what's happening with that kid.
Questions on any of that stuff? This is pulled straight from the handbook. This is just our bullying policy. I can read some pieces of it if you want. Bullying means a single significant incident or a pattern of incidences involving written, verbal, or electronic communication, or a physical act or gesture, or any combination thereof directed at another pupil. There are some criteria for that, and it's right here.
I think our plan is to go into greater detail on, on our bullying process and investigations later on. So we just wanted to be able to represent it in this report for you guys today.
You won't see bullying as a specific incident type in Power School, because when we have a report of bullying, we're dealing with the specific behavior that, whether it was some kind of physical aggression or if it was repeated harassment or something like that, you're not going to see it as logged as bullying. You're going to see a log entry that talks about the, that that investigation was open and then what the result of the investigation. You're not going to see bullying as a specific incident type, because it takes an investigation to get to that determination, and we need to deal with the behavior that's initiating that investigation and not waits for an investigation to be done. So we have had, at the time of this data poll, nine total investigations. Four of those investigations were unsubstantiated, and five of them were substantiated. What happens is a student would come in and report that they're being bullied. We would open, or a parent could report something. We would open a bullying investigation. Students would be interviewed and their statements would be taken. If a student mentions another student in their statement, then we go to that student and get their statement, and it can lead to a spider web of conversations and getting different information from, you know, maybe not the initial people that you thought were involved. Once those statements are concluded and there is a timeframe for those conversations to happen, the bullying committee, which is six members of administrators and guidance counselors, come together and review the statements and then answer some questions about it based on the policy and determine whether or not it is substantiated as bullying or not. If, well, either way, even if it's not substantiated, there could be further interventions just based on getting a bigger picture of what was happening. But there may be further behavior interventions. There could be supportive interventions, including SAP counseling and guidance counseling. We do have the modules from BASE, which are the online modules that the students can participate in, and, you know, things of that nature may happen once the investigation is over.
It's just a summary. One of the biggest things we work with, just to add to that, is with the unsubstantiated, that might mean, that basically means it doesn't meet the definition for bullying under the law. It doesn't mean that there wasn't a code of conduct violation per our student handbook. So frequently, what we'll find is you have a code of conduct violation, but it didn't necessarily meet that bullying definition. And what we try to be very clear with our families and students about is if that behavior is to continue, to let us know, because it could certainly become a bullying situation, and we just need to know about it. So we do a lot of trying to educate people who are, are involved in these, but we know that there's, so, there's a lot of pieces to an investigation like this. We're looking forward to talking to you guys more about it later, and we could talk about it, you know, at another time, how we try to support people who are the alleged victims in that role during an investigation and that kind of thing.
Questions? Okay.
What does BASE stand for? I mean, I know that it's modules that you can get.
I think we actually asked and we couldn't, did we find?
Yeah, I don't know that we found out.
But there, what's...
It's like an education module?
Yeah, they're little, yeah.
They're all under the social-emotional learning umbrella. So there's lots of different things from like substance abuse or bullying or, you know, anger management. There's like, there's a lot of different options.
It even has goal setting and, you know, when you're feeling, dealing with grief and loss. They're like little mini lessons that a student can go through, and the idea is that we would pair like a BASE program, which is a lesson they would do during their in-school, and then they would follow up with their counselor. So you get kind of both, we're going to cover the social-emotional pieces, and then you get the counselor to reflect on how your behavior impacted others.
And these, and that's something that we may determine is necessary once the investigation is concluded and we've determined that it is in fact bullying. We would have students who, who probably already got some kind of intervention and don't necessarily need further suspension or something like that, but do need further counseling and education on their behavior. So they might, you know, go to guidance during win or during a learning lab or something to, to do one of these modules.
So that part is the, how do we help this kid not do this again? You know, a lot of what we hear from students who are substantiated is, I was just joking. You know, I was just joking and realized it was impacting them so bad, you know what I mean? And the joke keeps going until it's too far. And they don't, until we say, hey, here's the mirror, you know, how would you feel in this situation? And they go, oh, you know. So this part of these interventions is really about how do we prevent them from ending up back in that spot where they're, you know, kind of getting hit on the head with that situation again.
So attendance. So with attendance, we have a procedure, and part of that procedure is notifying families when their student has missed specific classes. So we send a first attendance letter after five unexcused absences in any one class. They get a second attendance letter if a student has missed, after they've had nine unexcused absences in any one class. It's a little, it's, it's more of a communication tool in the, hey, your, your kid's not making it to that class. It is our first flag for when we are looking into bigger patterns of not attending period. It could be something where a kid is not getting up and they're missing their first period class, but mom and dad have gone to work already and don't realize it. So it's, it's a communication tool on top of the phone calls that get sent out for unexcused absences and things like that that are automatic through Power School.
Power School sends out, if you guys don't know, I just want to, they send out a notification to parents. It can be a text for every missed class. Yeah. If you're talking to your parents, like, wait a minute, I don't have that or something, you know, please just reach out, because that exists and it can go right to their phone. It's the best part about that app.
It's highly annoying when your children is late to class and they get the call to say they're absent.
Parents will, within minutes, send a text to the kid.
And we are so grateful to parents about that, Steve. I know, because if they are late, after, I think it's the first fifteen minutes of the class, that's when it goes out. So if, if they came in late...
I got home this morning, three minutes in.
Sure. It was three minutes. But it, that can happen, that's, that's a pretty frequent thing. But it's pretty funny what, we like it when the parents call you guys. That's the best intervention we've found, so, thank you.
We also enjoy it when they call us and say, but they said they're in class, and I'm like, I'm looking at them in the hallway right now, they're not there.
In-class means in the classroom, not you made it onto the school grounds, or you're hanging in your car or hanging in the hallway. So sometimes we have to explain that as well.
So can I just confirm that you send a letter if I miss five English classes?
Correct.
So if I spread it out a little bit of where my unexcused absences are, where do those letters come in?
Where, it will just take a little longer to catch up with you. Because, for example, we, we look at the data weekly and send letters out every week. At this point, we do, we're starting to see kids who have racked up five in one class, but it's a sporadic one, like, they had, they were late or something, and it's just one piece where they got dismissed, but it wasn't for an excused reason. So they got unexcused at the end of the day, and it's just now, there's been five, and we've been in school for, are we at a hundred days yet? We must be at a hundred days by now. I've lost track. You know, it's, it's not, it's not a problematic behavior. I mean, it's natural to every once in a while miss a day, but if they're unexcused, then you'll get the letter.
And Sarah's done a lot of conversations with parents who, like, you know, we'll find, like, they'll get this letter and parents will call right away, well, there were doctor's appointments and we, you know, different procedures it may have happened. And some of that is just, we just send us the, yes, they were at the hospital that day, and we can correct that.
Yes. We're happy to fix it. Like, if, if you, if you forget to send a note or forget to call when they were out sick, just email me the dates and, and that's, that's fine. If you had a doctor's appointment and forgot to get a note, you know, let me know. It's not a huge deal, I'm happy to talk to you. But I will say that we are being very strict about what is an excused absence and what is an unexcused absence per our handbook. It has caused some...
Discomfort.
Yeah. Discomfort's a better word, to conversations with some parents and students about, well, why is my child not excused for this? I'm calling in. Thank you for letting us know your child will not be there, but if they're not out of school for one of the reasons listed in the handbook as excused, including, you know, illness or appointments or, you know, whatever's there, then they're unexcused, so.
We're going to be, we're going to take a more serious look at our attendance policy and our coding and over summer. And the plan is, the beginning of next year, have conversations with parents about this, right? That when you called your child in because they have a haircut that day, that's not an excused absence, right? That's thank you for letting us know type of thing, but it's still unexcused. So, yeah, so we will be having more conversations about this, because kids have to be, there's so many hours of seat time that were required by law for, for a student to have.
And what we're finding is this, so this is the, right off our handbook that Sarah put... put in there for excused absences that is listed for all of our families. What we're finding is we have some kids and parents, I will say, who really play the, and I hate to say this way because it's, I think, if you're sick, stay home. Like we want you to get better and rest and recover. But unfortunately, when you're looking at a chronic pattern over time, we have some people really taking advantage of the illness piece. So if they're at school and a student's feeling ill, we are asking all of our students, as we really have always done this, but we're trying to be better about communicating it, go see the nurse. Don't just leave. Like that's, then you just left. If you go to the nurse and the nurse says, oh yeah, you know, you need to go home, she goes in and she corrects the attendance for that. That's an excused absence for the remainder of your day. And she'll put that in there. But, you know, we do see patterns of, you know, they've caught on that, you know, if you have three days, you're out. Boy, that catches some attention from us and we might be asking for a doctor's note. So you can look at some students and see a very clear, out for two days, back for one, out for another day, out for two. You know, they're, they're trying to not get scooped up in our system and we haven't quite figured out how to address all of, all of that. I mean, the goal is that we want, you know, it is mandatory that students are in the classroom. It's one of the things we say to families, you know, you don't, going to school is not a choice. This is really their job right now and how can we help you attend? And there is a concern that it piles up, you know, even when it's excused. Takes a toll on your studies. So.
So the next slide is just some of the unexcused absences. Haircut could be on there, but that is, so again, straight from the handbook. You know, those not, those appointments that aren't necessarily emergent enough that need to be during the school day that you could have scheduled after 2:15. And I will say, vacations that are pre-approved are excused. You know, if you are going to see, I don't know, whatever, but I mean, there's some, there's some legitimate reasons that, you know, a family's going on vacation.
I mean, we think about, some of our kids actually have really cool experiences with their vacation. So really what that becomes is, so you have an opportunity to see if they're going to, you know, another country, you know, experience a different culture. Those are really amazing experiences, but plan ahead. You know, you're missing a chunk of your academic time. Work with you, with us and your teachers to, maybe they could use that trip to meet some of their competencies through their experience. So there's ways we can work with you to keep you academically on track, but when people just kind of disappear and then come back after a week or two, it's like, you know, now you're playing catch-up in a whole different way. And that, that can really snowball on any student.
So the letters, for freshmen, 28 students have gotten a first letter. 26 10th graders, 23 11th graders and 31 12th graders have gotten the first letter, meaning they've missed at least five of an individual, at least five unexcused absences in an individual class. For a total of 108 students who have received a first letter. The next slide is who have, how many have gotten second letters? So of those 108 students, 20 freshmen have gotten their second letter, 21 sophomores have gotten their second letter, 15 juniors and 27 seniors have gotten a second letter. So in that class where they earned enough unexcused absences to get a first letter, it kept going and then they kept missing unexcused and they got a second letter. And it could be, I mean, sometimes if it's kids missing whole days, when we send the letter, it tells the parents what classes were missed and how many absences they have in that class that are missed. So it could be more than one class at the same time triggering the letter. Once they've gotten that second letter, there are a number of interventions that we have available to us that are individualized based on what's going on with the student. We call or email, guidance gets involved, teachers get involved when they haven't seen a student for a while to check in, you know, talk with parents about what's holding them up from coming to school. Is there anything we can do with, to help? We talk to the student individually to talk about, you know, what's holding you back from attending class? What can we help you with? How can we support you? We have different meetings available to us, IEP meetings. If attendance is an issue, that's something that's discussed. EST meetings, which are educational support team meetings, which bring together the teachers and guidance and administrators and parents and children to discuss together, working as a team to help the student with whatever concerns we have, including attendance. Usually this leads to grades not being so great and those kinds of things. And how can we work together to help you with all of the issues that you maybe having related to school and attendance in classes? That would then lead on to eventually home visits and DCYF referrals and CHINS for referrals to the director of student support. So.
And a CHINS is when it gets to that really severe legal level and you're, you're going to court because it is a man, you know, compulsory attendance laws and it could be a situation where it might be considered neglect. It could be a situation where parents need some support for a variety of reasons. And sometimes the state can provide supports that we as a school are beyond us.
The last two acronyms?
DCYF is Department of Children, Youth and Families.
Uh, I gotta look up CHINS.
Services.
Thank you.
Oh, the H is the child. Okay.
CH, yep.
The H was throwing me off. Further questions?
Yes, Mr. Swimmer.
Some of us don't have the best hearing in the world. Second, legible text for all viewers in this room. Excellent presentation. A plus. You have raised the bar for all future presentations in this room of what they should be for everybody in the audience who can see and can't see and for those who can hear and not hear and those who want to understand the issue. Thank you very much.
Tim?
Will the next two for next month be like this?
Absolutely.
Cause this is very-
I can, no, I can share the-
Basic and it's exactly what we need. Yeah, no, I mean, this is what we're looking for. Obviously, I think we'll have future discussions on different things, but this is exactly what I know we're looking for. Good job, Tim. I concur with Luda, Versa.
I just look forward to seeing the comparative data at the end of the year. I think that'll really be insightful.
I do want to say, if there's something that you think of that, you know, after, you know, contemplating, if there's something that you have a question about or would like to see in the next presentation, please just email me or let me know.
One more comment.
I'm going to let Steve go because he hasn't, and then Bert.
So looking through the data, I appreciate it. Is there something that, a resource that you're lacking or that could help, like as you move forward that while you have the attention of the board and we can see exactly the behavioral numbers, you know, what, what the teachers are doing on a day in and day out basis, what can we do as a board? Is there a service? Is there a program? Is there a resource that you're in need of that obviously, you know, if it's expensive, we may not be able to do it, but it's something that we can think about or try to figure out?
I've got all nine. Go ahead. Start the list.
I'm going to start by saying that in the high school, we have a very good team. I, like I will, like Shannon said, this is my first year in this role, period. I've been a teacher for some time and, you know, I, I wanted to help in a different way and so I pursued my master's and became eligible for this position. So I'm finding that it, there's a little bit of a curve because I'm new with, you know, learning what I'm even able to do, but also the students getting to know me and how to interact with me and trust me in certain situations. I think now that I'm settling in with them, things have changed a little bit, but I will say, having Mrs. Martin and Ms. Catrubi on a team with me, I think we have worked very well together. Ms. Catrubi, I don't know how I would do this job without her, quite honestly. She is amazing. I, there, there are not enough good words about what she does with our students every day. They are not well right now because she hasn't been here. They've been looking for her every day. Is she back yet? She's at a conference right now. She'll be back tomorrow, everyone, so you can, you can be rest assured. But I'm sure there's always something more that we could be doing.
I, today I wished we could have replicated us, but sometimes I-
It's been a couple of days.
Time, it would be great. Take 10 o'clock. But I, I do know counselors are, I, time and time again, we've got young people who really, for a variety of reasons, really need access to a counselor. And I don't know how to fix that because it's, it's bigger than just us even. You know, you talk to West Central who works very closely with us and really tries to support us. And even the SAP counselors have been a godsend in so many ways to help with some of this access. I think that we've done a few things that really have helped provide, expand what we can do in that area. Just having Hannah come in as a college and career counselor and pull some of those counseling duties away from our school counselors. We still have school counselors that spend a lot of time doing kind of the, just the system stuff. I mean, get, you know, schedules and college recommendations and, you know, scholarships. And that's time that is needed by a school counselor, but it's also time where they can't meet maybe regularly with some kids who could really benefit from a counselor, if that makes sense. So counselors, I, it would be, if I had a wish list to throw at you real quick, I-
Can parents, so like if you don't observe a behavior, can a parent call you up and say, hey, I've been noticing this with, is there something we can do?
Yes. In fact, we count, we count on parents. So many of our parents are actually really great with that. Even if their kid, like we had, I got a call the other day. We had a student who was changing a medication course and it was going to have, you know, it's a little wonky sometimes when you do that. And just giving us the heads up on that and working with the parent on, okay, what's okay for me to share out with that student's teachers, what things would be normal, what things should we look out for? And having a team approach is so nice. But what we could do better is letting our community know about our SST process. That is a refer, there's a referral avenue for that, for anything. And if it comes to our team, that team of professionals is put together very intentionally to filter that student's needs to, to what they need. So whether it's, maybe they need to be considered for special ed services. Maybe they're an EST student, so educational support team. Maybe it's the SAP counselor. Maybe they need to see our homeschool liaison, Ms. Ball. You know, it, it, maybe it's the nurse. It's, they're there to really take a look at that. And anybody can say, hey, could you, I'm worried about this kid. It could be a parent, a coach, a teacher. Right now, we tend to get most of our referrals from our staff, which is still good. They work with these kids every day. And through our data polls, like we pull a quarterly failure report, for example, to look at, oh jeez, you know, we've got some students off track with their credits now. So SST, it would be great. And if you just call the school and talk to a counselor or admin, that's really what we do with those concerns that come to us. We take it and we bring it to that student support team and really try to wrap around that student as best we can.
People won't put the numbers up there. Without the numbers to make an intelligent decision, things might not get done. With the numbers, you know, you've got a yardstick, something to measure with. So what you do this year, you look at what you did and that is important. Teacher retention is better. Your job is better if we solve the discipline problem. And if we have teachers that stay and you people that stay, we will have better educated children. And so, yes, it's- But if they're not hearing or learning how to act, and that's a funny comment for me, huh? Thanks again.
Well, and I, I just, thank you for, but I, one of the things that we say to our staff all of the time, there are more students than there are administrators. If only the administrators are the ones addressing these behaviors, you saw these numbers. We, we would be underwater every moment of every day. And so those tier one and even into that tier two step, we wouldn't be able to address things in the time that we do and the way that we do and couple, here's your consequence with, how do we help you do better next time if we didn't have the efforts of the entire staff? Like every bit, I, walking down the hallway and hearing somebody swear at somebody else and saying, hey, don't talk like that. I mean, they all, every teacher knows, that's, that's not what we do here. We, we address them. And they do that, you know? They don't have to necessarily have you in their class to say, whoa, what are you doing? And those little interactions, setting that tone for, this is at school and this is how we behave at school matters a lot. And it, it allows us to do what we do.
Stephen?
So first of all, wonderful presentation. That was a lot better seeing it here than trying to scroll through my phone, read it.
You have a Chromebook.
You have a, so this is something I've been going back and forth in my head for the last 11 slides to say, since you were on in-school suspension. And I've made this point clear to the board in the past. And this is why the device's question came up. And I want to make this clear to you two now. The powers that you have given the students while they're in in-school suspension have been abused and quite frankly, the system is being used. I've had multiple instances where whoever's student in in-school suspension and I receive texts, Snapchats, everything from them, not just once or twice through the day, but through every span of 10 minutes, every hour of the day. I've had this with multiple students that have, that I'm friends with that have had access to their phones that I've walked in and I've seen them able to play games on their computers. And this has been over multiple months throughout the entire year. And I, I'm glad you guys are starting to fix some of the disciplines. I know you're working on the out-of-school suspension piece and that is a wonderful step that's being taken. But in-school suspension, there is some serious work that needs to be done for it to be effective.
And around the phone specifically?
That's one big piece. Cause I've talked to multiple students, multiple WDB and my friends, and they've quite honestly said that they enjoyed in-school suspension and wouldn't mind being there instead of being in the classroom. So that's not something we hope.
Thank you for that feedback. We have had situations where it's a game and a lot and we do have this magical-
How? Who can go in and shut them down? So when we do find out, and I'm sure I do not know all the things happening on a device at any moment, you guys are quite impressive when it comes to your devices. He's, he is helpful with Chromebooks at least, but I appreciate the feedback on the phones.
Thank you.
That's helpful.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Okay. This brings us to our informational action items. And the first one up is the bus barn. So I thought I would like to publicly give an update on the outcome of the bus barn.
I'm sorry, I have to take a break for a second. I'm sorry, I have to pay, take breakfast.
Oh, that's great. Excellent. Please.
Yeah, please come by, take a look at the door.
May I come by to the door?
That just sticks right in front of you.
Here you go from a real high to a real low. Um, okay, bus barn. So, um, myself and Bert and Donna attended the select board meeting on Monday. As we have talked about publicly here in the meeting and has been presented to us, the board had significant concerns about the conditions at the bus barn. For those that don't know, we currently occupy two bays at the facility. They have dirt floors, which makes, um, working on the buses unsafe at best. It's not a heated, our bays are not heated. There is a structure inside one of the bays for our, um, drivers to do their paperwork that the fire marshal has deemed a fire hazard, um, and we have had reports that bathrooms have been locked. So the board chose to take a unanimous action. We do pay six thousand, just under $6,000 a year in rent, and the board unanimously voted to withhold that payment in order to make improvements to the facility. We felt that was, um, important. The board did make that decision publicly, however, the select board nor the town manager were contacted by myself or Donna to say that we were going to withhold our payment. In fact, the board voted to go ahead and make our payment for this year. At the Monday meeting, uh, the select board, uh, voted unanimously to actually reaffirm the vote, and we have been evicted from our two bays effective June 30th of this year. I went to respectfully ask that they reconsider, um, that because I think that it will do harm to our students and our families. I have to say, I was disappointed in the response of the chairman of the board, who, excuse my language, told me that we needed to stop our bitching. So, um, so that is the situation that we are in currently. To say that I am disappointed and frustrated is an understatement. I made my statements at that meeting, and it was very clear that that decision had already been made, um, and it felt more as a public slap on the wrist to myself and Donna, which is fine. So I sat very quietly. I know that the other members have things to say. I did mention at the end of the meeting that there had been concerns raised as to whether we would continue to fill our other obligations that we have with the town, such as our SRO, such as allowing voting, um, in the gymnasium, and I, Donna has told Hunter, and I went as well, for what it was worth, to say that, um, the board had not had any of those discussions. Because this isn't a, a tit-for-tat situation, it's taking something away from the town isn't, in my opinion, uh, going to make this any better. So I'm sorry that the divide that seems to be between the select board and the school board, which has been here since I've been here, has grown wider and not more narrow, but, um, we will, we will work our way through that and I, through this eviction. That I am very certain of. With that, I know, I'm sure all three of the gentlemen to my right have something to say, um, but I wanted to publicly say that, uh, we've been evicted from the bus barn, but we are allowed to keep our buses in the yard and run separate electric and build a lean-to structure or larger, should we choose to. Who would like to speak first? Bert?
A gun to our heads. For all intensive purposes, they know that our current budget doesn't have any money for it. They also know that our proposed budget cannot be changed now. It will be voted on as it is, and there will be nothing in there. So anything that we take out to solve this bus problem, let's build a $400,000 building. Comes out of education. So what do we do? If in fact, we stand still and allow this to happen, the buses are outside, they're plugged in, because it's a plug-in station. Who cleans the snow off the roof? The bus driver? We got any of them that are 12 feet tall? We could build steel stairways for them to get high enough to do it. But that being said, what's the ultimate advantage? Could do both sides of the bus. How long does it take? Well, the bus is running to warm up, so, um, okay, they got, they got time. We have a hard time finding bus drivers now, we'll have a harder time then. This comes apart, come to be, from my perspective, as I see it, the move started right from the beginning to get us out. We had four bays, they took one. We had three, they took another. We got two. So I think probably everybody in this town knows I'm the guy that you don't put up against the wall. I fight like hell, and I have absolutely no intentions of not. What they're doing is a simple example of doubling the fist up as hard as you can in this-
Fist as hard as you can.
And ramming them together. The body is the municipality, is the people. It's not helpful in any way. It serves no good. They, uh, there are stories substantiated or not, is not known yet, that somebody, uh, was going through records in one of the offices. No call was given to the SAU. Correct on that?
Correct.
Bathroom's locked. Okay? You're a bus driver. Get your kids. You're out on a route. You just pull over side of the road, walk along to the back of the bus and take a leak beside the bus? No? When you get back to that bus garage, you gotta go. If in fact, they are landlords charging us rent, they've gotta give us the accommodations, period, or they're in violation of the law. Quite frankly, I do not understand how five members of that board can participate in what's happening. That being said, they did. So what do we do? I will tell you right now, I believe we can solve the problem. But I'm gonna ask everybody in this town right now that's listening to this, all of the employees of the district, we're gonna ask you to help. And when that time comes, I hope that you show up, because we're gonna do our damnedest. And please, we're gonna need your help, but there is a path that we can do this. Thanks for listening, and you have my prayers that you show up. That means every one of us who can. At one meeting, I said, if your husband doesn't agree with what's going on, you leave him This time, bring him in, no matter what, everybody. If they can walk, whatever, they're registered voters. And so within a short period of time, you will have more information in which to get a better hold on. But this could be quite a catastrophe if we cannot win this battle.
Steve?
So I, I was watching Monday night, and, you know, I wasn't there in person, so I was listening to it, and the audio sometimes fluctuates up and down, but the, the first thing that I noticed was the, it just sounded like they were angry. Maybe not all of the selectmen, but it, it just sounded like there was a tone in their voice where decision was already made, and granted, I went back and watched the meeting, but, or meeting or two before, where they were discussing all the places that we could store our buses and, I don't know if they, like, Mr. Spalding was there, but he, he doesn't go as a board member, he's there as a citizen, so he can't speak on our behalf. But I, I just wanna touch a few things, because some things were said that, quite frankly, aren't true, from my perspective. I have a pretty good reading comprehension level, and I don't think on any other thing than the bus barn, did you ever say in any of those emails that we're not paying. You asked a follow-up question about the Newport Times where you asked the town manager, I don't see where we spent those funds, committed those funds, can you help me figure out where those funds went or where they're coming from, because I, I don't see it. Not once did you say you're not gonna pay that. Not once did we say we're not gonna pay the SRO. And then what was the other thing that was getting brought up to try to muddy the waters with all this? There was the SRO, Newport Times, oh, the Economic Developer.
Economics.
So I've read many emails, and I don't see anywhere where you say that you're not gonna pay for anything, other than you avoid the, the bus question, the bus barn question. Well, you ask some follow-up questions. So I just wanna put that out there, that at no point in time, other than hesitancy on the bus barn response, because we talked about it, uh, we, we, we talked about it in public, which by the way, they acknowledged, and so I wanna talk about that real quick, too. So in this discussion that they had Monday night, the board, uh, mentioned that for 30 minutes, the transportation coordinator, bad mouth, I can't even remember the exact word that they used, bitched about the conditions at the bus barn, and then, so obviously, they know that that happened. They're, you know, quote-unquote, the, in charge of the bus barn, or the, the DPW warehouse, whatever we're calling the actual name, but for us, we call it the bus barn. Did anybody reach out to you from the select board to say, hey, uh, saw that y'all ever had some issues, um, can we get together and talk about those? I don't appreciate you airing that in, at the, in public like that, without a heads up. Did anybody talk to you about that before Monday night?
No.
When you were scolded?
No.
Because I felt like they were scolding you. And I wanna say also to anybody that's listening and watching, that it was very responsible and respectful how both of you acted, because I don't know that I, I would have, because, I'll, I'll continue, but I just wanna say I appreciate it as a member of the board, the grace that y'all showed. You asked them to reconsider, like, why, you know, because number one, we never said we're gonna break the lease and move out. We said our vote was to withhold the rent money to make improvements so that our employees have workable conditions. And if you can't understand that, you're manipulating and you're trying to convince the town, something that's quite frankly, not true. If we're gonna withhold the lease to make improvements, that's to better the entire town. Like, that's not going to hurt them. It might hurt them in the sense of they won't get the $5,000 XXX dollars, the five, eight hundred, $5,800, right? So $5,800 isn't a lot to make improvements, but we were told we had to get rid of our shanty that we have in there that's unacceptable for our employees, and so we have to, to make decisions. And the best thing that we thought we would do at the time, and again, we never sent the letter, we never said we're breaking the lease and getting out, we never said we're not gonna pay any of the other obligations that we share with the town, and so I think that that was, uh, tweaked in a sense to make it look as if we were like, yeah, we're not paying y'all, and that is not the case. Now, maybe because I don't lease property or have renters or anything else like that, so maybe that's a technical term, so I won't argue that, but it, it's disingenuous to act like we were going to break the lease, um, when it was to withhold the money to make improvements. And I also wanna talk about, they said that none of us reached out, not one person, and they were scolding you about us not reaching out, and again, I will say, you could've reached out to us, because you complained that we, rightfully so, the person in charge who owes us the risk, uh, and, you know, resources that they need to continue to do their job, and so for someone to come up here and tell us, hey, these are the resources I need, this is the risk to our employees, as Mr. Spalding already covered with the restrooms and, um, you know, there's, there's no, there's no even privacy to where if the coordinator had to have a private conversation, he'd have to kick everybody out. So anyway, those are the conditions. But, and I'll give the benefit of the doubt to Mr. Burrows, but on October 3rd, on or about, we had requested to meet with Mr. Burrows at, who is a, on the select board, to meet us at the bus barn, so we could go over these exact things that I'm talking about right now. Mr. Burrows missed the appointment, he apologized for it. Yes. Me or Mr. Beard, who was also meeting him there that day, could've reached, should've reached out. We didn't, because, you know, within a week, we had the, the session where he says that we were, uh, bitching about the conditions, whereas I look at it as reporting that we're owed so that we can improve our condition. So we did try to meet with Mr. Burrows as members of the board to work together to try to forge some type of community so that we could work together on it. And then, you, you know, I'm not gonna air the select board's dirty laundry, but the, the same people in charge of that barn, there's other things that have allegedly gone on in town that, quite frankly, the things that I've seen on the select board meetings that have been, uh, that they have been accused of, or it's been implied, I don't know what the right word is, allegedly, but it's not all above board. There's been, uh, roads, bridges shut down, there's been, uh, letters allegedly sent off that were not correct from the person who is in charge of that facility out there. And so if there needs to be private conversations, that is why, so that I'm not on here saying things like this. And if the select board can't accept that, then maybe we all need to sit down together and air everything out. But there was an attempt made, and I don't, and I, and that was one of the points that was made and brought up to you, was that nobody reached out to us. We did reach out. That is not true, and again, because it was in October, Mr. Burrows may have forgotten because we never did have the meeting, because he, he missed it, but there was an attempt made. So I just wanna make sure that is clear and that the town understands that we, as a school board, did try to reach out, board members to board members, to work on it and to come up and see if we have a solution to take back to the super interim superintendent and to the town manager. So I just wanna put that out there, that there was an attempt made on October 3rd, on or about, and it fell through, and yes, I'll do a, you know, just as y'all did, I, one of us should've reached out and said, hey, I see we missed the meeting, when can we reschedule? It didn't happen, so yes, but there was an attempt made, and it was portrayed as if we're having all secret meetings while we're bashing them in public, and really, uh, what Caleb did was give us the conditions his employees are working in, and it's our responsibility to work to make it better, and then this is a joint environment with the town, it's all the taxpayers, it's the same money, whether it's $5,000 going to improvements, or $5,000 going to pay rent to make up the electricity costs, which I understand all that. However, the, the picture that was painted Monday night was, from my standpoint, not an accurate picture. Thank you.
Tim, do you have anything before I go back to Bert?
I do, but Bert can talk.
Okay. Bert?
So everything that Steve just said is true. So let's, let's talk about other things. Town versus Sullivan County has been going on now for almost 20 years. But we got through it. We had elevated access to the Opera House so that we could vote, made it ADA compliant. Sullivan County said, no, you don't wanna participate, you don't wanna pay, uh, so their hard-nose, um, win or take all attitude of the town. So their hard-nose, win or take all attitude of the town has been going on from the beginning of the tenure of the current town manager. Again, the two fists off of the same body. Nonsensical. The Health Center. There's what they call a pilot, which is payment in lieu of taxes. You don't tax them. They give you money, payment in lieu of taxes, because we want them here, because they are an asset to the community, and because we need them. But, how much is that? "Tim, I want a donation from you. Will you give me five bucks?" Probably. "I want 500." Well, maybe not. "I want 5,000." It's negotiations. We do not have a board, or a town manager, who is willing to solve problems, but they are real good at creating them. The bathroom issue alone, if in fact, they really are a landlord to us, and they do not give us sanitary facilities, anybody who rents to anybody else knows that's the last thing you do. And they've done it. So right now, they are in a serious jeopardy, just because of that one issue. Never mind the rest. So... Retaliation after it? So, I've got a tenant. The toilet doesn't flush. I say, "Okay, move out." Who's right and who's wrong? The tenant is right, and I am wrong. That tenant goes to the Hilton and lives, and gets all of his meals and everything else, and in the end, I wind up paying for it. So, the lack of good leadership there is part of the problem. So, I believe, I'm not speaking for myself, and I'm not speaking for the board, excuse me, I am speaking for myself, not for the board. I have absolutely no intention of letting them off the hook on anything at all. And I have absolutely every intention of winning this, period. No matter what it takes. So, that I say, if we are successful, it'll be a very good day. And it'll be a very good day for children. I can envision what school opening in August would be, with bus drivers who don't want to work here, the ones we lose, or whatever. So, I think that's enough said. What I want is, I want the listeners and I want the school to understand that Attila the Hun is sitting right here. They will not get away with this.
Tim?
Excuse me. So, yeah, so I, I wish I'd went to the meeting, but I was kind of like, not sure and leery of the whole, because then there's three of us there, and then it constitutes, so I wasn't really sure. So, like, that's why me and Steve stayed home. You know, I wanted to throw my chair at the TV, because there's things I could have said, I wanted to say that, you know, I appreciate you standing there and taking the heat for it, although, you know, it's complete BS. Here's the thing, and this is what gets me, and whatever happens with the bus barn, in the end, it is what it is, we'll figure it out here. But my point is, I represent the town of Newport, as in the people of Newport. Every one of us on this board, on that board, represent and are supposed to be standing up for what's best for Newport as residents. And that's, that's what gets me, because if you had something that was going to be great for the school, but horrible for the town, I'm not going to vote for it. I'm not going to hurt my town just to make my board look better. And I'm not seeing that on the other flip side of things. It's, "Hey, what can we do to make the town look better, and we'll leave the liability to the school?" And I've seen this with a lot of housing projects that have been getting improved, that nobody's thinking about, "What's the consequences to the school?" Because they really don't care, because it will be our responsibility to tell the voters, "Oh, we need all this new money, because we have 30 new kids that came in." Well, how'd that happen? Because the town thought it was a good idea to give Sunapee Street $300,000, or three years, free tax money, no, no taxes need to be paid, just so you'll build that building right there, and the liability falls on the school. We represent the people of Newport, and that is our job, that is our only job. And if we can't do that job, then we shouldn't be in the position we're in. We are elected officials. I happen to be appointed at the moment, but that's why we're here. And it goes for the same thing for that board. It goes for the same on the zoning board. I say the same thing. I said, "The last meeting was pretty heated, and next Thursday's meeting should be pretty good, too," is, "I represent the people of Newport." I don't represent the construction company standing in front of me, wanting me to bend my rules, as in the town's rules, so they can get their way, and save them money, and whatever. I represent the people of Newport, and I'm not seeing that down there on everything. And I want people to get involved and ask questions. And, you know, like I said, we'll figure this out, but it's ridiculous that we have one, I said this so many times, it's redundant, but like, it doesn't matter, you're either going to take out of my left pocket or my right pocket, you're taking it out of my pocket, it's my tax money. That bus barn, doesn't matter, it's our tax money, it's our building as a community. And those decisions are not being made for the betterment of Newport. And as far as I'm concerned, that needs to change immediately.
I just want to say one, one last thing, and that is, I know I started this conversation with the unanimous vote of the board, but acquiring these two bays has gone back, prior to Donna being here, I've had conversations with Dr. Minahan, our prior superintendent, about concerns over acquiring the bus barn. The town manager did state that, you know, he and the, I assume, I'm going to make an assumption here, that both he and the board feel that the equipment that they have stored in various places around the town, he stated was worth the same or more as our school buses that transport our kids to and from school every day. And so, I would say that if it seems like I'm frustrated, and I am complaining, and maybe even bitching, then tonight I am. So, I can sit quietly for a long time, but I will reassure the town that we are going to move forward with this. It will continue to be on our agenda as we problem-solve, which Donna is already working on, and we will work our way through this. So, with that, one more thing?
Oh, maybe a couple. There's always more.
Jeff Kessler is listing these things that support their position, and one of them that is, everybody's buses are outside, including Clermont. Clermont's buses have not been inside since I was a kid.
Housed.
Excuse me?
They haven't been outside, they're inside.
They're inside, right, housed. And they even go to, when the bus comes in in the wintertime, they spray it from underneath, and their rust problems that they have are significantly less. Calcium chloride, wet, sitting on metal, is disastrous. So here is somebody who's doing it right, and for students, they're probably not much richer than we are, and they're doing it right. Because in the end, they buy less buses, and so the care that they put into the buses pays off in the end. Well, sitting right next to me was Wayne Boardman, who was the mechanic, retired from them, from Clermont, and doing the buses. That was his job. So when Jeff, now, for a little bit of humor, I had told everybody going into that meeting that I was going to shut up and not say a word. And that lasted until the lies came. And at that point, I told God where to go. And it shows the lack of a chairperson researching so that he is speaking factually about what he is doing. Facts are important, lies are not. Okay, maybe he misspoke. No, he did it twice, not at that meeting, but twice. Unacceptable. At the zoning board meeting that Tim is referencing, the deliberations are supposed to be with the board, just like a jury going into deliberations. The lawyers can't follow them in and argue, the lawyers stay out. The applicant was continually coming on after deliberations had begun. I'm sitting home, I had just have, had a lot of facial work done, and decided not to go, and I'm watching this and listening to this. I get my truck and I drive down, and I say, "Hey, boys, you can't do this." I have two agreeing with me immediately, and then a third one comes on when he understands the law. And Jeff Kessler, who's been doing this since the 70s, voted no to stop what we were doing and do it another day. Which means, he was willing to override the law that has been imposed on every person in this community since zoning came in. He's willing to throw that out. In order to get this development in, that they gave $300,000 a year tax abatement. Now, I've got to correct something that Tim said, I don't think he meant to say that. The building is worth about a million-plus dollars now. They will still pay taxes on that million, but they're going to put 13 million into it, by their own estimates. That's certainly going to raise its value. And that value is going to come up significantly. But, based on that, they get $300,000 a year. That's $300,000 a year that this board could have to educate children, to solve our problems, for three years. With interest, that's a million dollars. So, there's very little thinking going on, on that side, and I guess, because I've set her mouth. But I'll tell you what I said, it's true.
Um, do I have a question?
Yes, if I could. What I'd like to do is, I would just like to say thank you to our dedicated bus drivers and to our bus coordinator, Caleb. I also want to assure families and our bus drivers that you have our, our full support, and that we are here for you, and we are going to do everything in our power to make this right.
Done and done. All right. No. No, no, because it's not an action item, sorry. Yeah, sorry. All right, that brings us to school calendar. So, we tabled this for, from the last meeting, but it looks like we are all good, all good to go for the school calendar?
Yes, so last month, I presented you with the 23-24 school calendar. It was tabled for this month for verification purposes, so I reached out and got all the verifications that you had requested, and it is good to go.
Okay. There are motion for the school calendar. Okay, any discussion? I'll say the graduation is tentatively June 5th, families, because I've heard that you're chomping at the bit already. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Stained? There you go.
I have, I have a question.
Yes.
It does not affect your decision there. This is something I've been approached multiple times by students. I've questioned it, and, again, I've been in the system now 14 years, I feel I deserve an answer from you guys. Last year, graduation was held June. Next year, it is set to be held June 5th. So why in the hell is this year's on June 14?
Because of the calendar.
Yeah, it goes by number of days that you're in school, number of hours that you're in school. And then, what happens is you have to look at, graduation can't be any more than or any less than so many days from the last day of school.
Right, so we're now two days from the last day of school, and that's still considered allowed?
Well, we, so what, let me just...
This current school year, not the next year.
Oh.
This current school year, we're two days before the last day of school.
Right, the way that it fell, because I didn't know, I was on the calendar, I can see that I didn't do the calendar, so I can't give you the reasoning for that, that whole purpose. But I know that the calendar was changed numerous times, because the people when I came here, the calendars still had...
Had to do some adjustments because of the number of hours when school started, the activities that were going on. I think Shanna can probably talk more to it, because I know she was part of the, the process. So are we okay to have her speak on?
I don't have the exact dates, but I can tell you what happened, because it took more than just yourself off, you, the first off, you can interpret without the language. Okay. So, graduation, we always, what we try to do is, we can have students graduate five days before the last official day of school. That's irregardless of snow days and things like that, and that's the statute for our state. Okay? So what happens in addition to that is, we have a set day of the week where we always hold graduation, and we've done that because it works well in our region. So for example, if we hold, if Sunapee, and Clermont, and Newport, and Lebanon all had their graduation on the same day of the week, we'd have a major issue. There's a lot of overlap in families, resources, and that kind of thing. So we basically, different schools have their graduation in different days, I don't remember what they all are, but ours is always a Wednesday. Right? So the first thing we do is we look at the calendar, say, "Okay, this is the last day of school." We go back, that counts as day one, and we go backwards five days, and then it's the Wednesday within that. Does that make sense? This year, the calendar was, I kid you not, one day past, putting it a week later than we could normally do. So I don't have the exact dates in front of me, but if you wanted to sit with me, I can show you, it's easier to point at, and to show you how that worked out. But does it kind of make sense?
I'm going to say sure.
We keep it on a Wednesday, and we can't graduate you more than five days before the last day of school.
Four, five, maybe eight.
Yeah.
So it's one day.
Very frustrating, the way it worked out.
You are not alone in the frustration. This, this current calendar, I know we went through a couple versions of before we landed on this version, and it shifted that date a few times. That's one of the reasons I am very grateful that the board for next school year has set this calendar so that we can communicate clearly with families, which I know doesn't help you this year, Stephen, but that's how that is figured.
And I, I don't want to downplay, I think we don't have a child that has graduated at this school yet, but I do respect and understand the importance of knowing, because I've had questions emailed to me about this in April of last year for this year. So I, I respect your frustration, and I understand, but we were operating within those five days and a Wednesday.
The state used to say we had to count any missed days previously, just recent years, where the state said, "We're not going to make you do that anymore," because it, I think it created such a hardship on families. I mean, think about the families that travel to join a graduation, like, that's really tough to wait, you know, kind of, until you're right up against the actual event, to book your plane ticket, you know?
All right. Capital reserve discussion?
So first, I want to thank Paul Brown for getting his documents through so quickly. We were given the funds of the city and town of Newport for five years. I wanted to just go over them a little bit with you. So for school renovations, they look, they look tiny like this.
I'm just looking through my head notes.
Oh, okay. So for the school renovations, it, at the end of the year, started at $41,189.36, that was in 2018. It was up to $41,275.90 in 2019, up to $41,362.87 in 2020, and then up to $41,424.94 in '21, and then up, and then $41,487.10 in 2022. So we did not spend any money, no money going in, no money coming out, except for, like, interest, right? The school land, future land, it started at $65,294.24 in 2018. That went up to $65,431.43 in 2019.
That went up to $65,431.43 in 2019. Then to, up to $65,569.29 in 2020. And then up to $65,667.68 in 2021. And then ending in 2022 at $65,766.22. The school out of district started at nothing and through the five years ended at nothing. So we never put any money in or took any money out. Unanticipated education, the very beginning, it started at $33,361. And then there's a new fund that was created adding $50,000 to that, making it $135,738.41 in 2018. Then it went up $136,146 in 2019. Up to $136,459.21 in 2020. And then up to $1,061.549.82. And that was because there were new funds created, $25,000 in 2021. That's why the total went up to $161,000. So there was money added that year. Transportation, it started at the $79,724, $79,724. New funds were created, giving it an additional $50,000, making it $142,000. I should say $142,393.72. Then it went down in 2018 to $41,688.35 because a new fund that was created, they took out $100,000. 2019, it went from that, the $41,688 to $41,855.26 in 2020. Up to $41,952.92.92.92 in 2021. And then in 2022, $42,022.91. School field purchase, it started at $20,210.28. Up to $20,267.58 in 2019. Up to $20,311.68 in 2020. Up to $20,337.96 in 21. And then in 2022, it was $20,347.30. So each one of those documents that you received was each year. So it started 2018, 2019, 2020, 2021. I just brought them all together so I could give you the numbers.
Bert, do you have anything to say about these numbers before I make my point?
Yeah. Very hard to read, print's so small, so.
That's how it was given to us. It came from the town.
This document is super important because you have learned how much money we have and where it is. And so if you have a bank account, you don't know you have it or how much is in it. It's not helpful. So this is very helpful. For us as a board, let's see if we can get it enlarged some, so that we can hold this document. So that we can hold this document for current years comparison of what we're doing and where our monies are. I haven't made the decision, but if there was something here that could have been used this year to reduce the tax impact, we might have chosen it, but not knowing, I didn't have that ability. So this should be a document that comes with our budget presentations in all future years for the board before their budget is finalized. And thank Mr. Brown for keeping track of this for us significantly.
Trustee?
I think it's Dr. Scott.
Trustee, question?
Yeah. So I will make this bigger. Well, Diane, we have an.
Yes.
So we'll get it bigger. And then do you want it sent to you or do you want me to just hand you new copies at the next board meeting?
I would like it just for my information, but it's to be helpful to you and Diane to figure out where we're going and what we're doing with this money that we didn't know how much the budget is finalized.
I would just like to make a separate point. This is somewhere where probably Mr. Spalding and I differ on capital reserve funds. So I would just like to point out that the total for our reserve funds in 2018 was $404,826.1 penny. And in 2022, the total is $331,253.83. And as has been pointed out to me, we have a $20 million budget. And that's not a lot in the bank to save should we have a new, a new housing complex move in and we have students with special needs that we didn't anticipate. And so while, yes, I suppose these funds could be used to reduce taxes, it would make me feel a lot better as a board member if we could have bolstered these. And I know we've tried before and they have not been approved by the voters. But it's, I don't think we're asking a lot. And the comparison that I'm gonna make, which now is to the town, is not to bash the town in any way because I think it's smart. Because in 2018, their balance, interestingly enough, was $404,680.16. And now it's $810,563.9. So while we're banking on our town, which I think is a good thing, we also have to bank on our schools. That's it. Anything else? Okay, that brings us to the school lunch increases.
So this, so you're gonna be a little shocked with this one, so be prepared. So not with the increases, but, so we're looking at doing three increases. The first one is for 25 cents for the high school, middle school, full price breakfast. It's currently $1.50. It's gonna go to $1.75. The second one is 25 cents for adult lunch that is currently $4. We'll be making that $4.25. And then 50 cents for adult breakfast that's currently $2. That would go to $2.50. If we, we pulled the numbers to see how many, how much money we have currently unpaid. And currently we're in the negative $13,498. And so if I, if I break that down per school, that means in the Richards Elementary School, we're in the negative $6,936.20. Someone is as high as owing the district $400, excuse me, $4.25, $425.15. The middle school is negative $2,620.60. Someone is as high as $478. Now, that's one family. That's just one family is what I'm talking about when I say they're as high as. The high school is in the negative $3,941.10. And we have someone that is as high as $356.25. Parents do receive monthly statements.
Except for last month?
Yeah, except for last month because there was an issue with the system. But they actually went out today?
Yeah, they went out today.
They went out today.
So it would be interesting to know, you know, every year at the beginning of the year, we ask families to fill out free and reduced lunch forms. And so it would just be interesting to know, especially, I don't want to single out these families at all. But, you know, do they know that they have that option to fill out that?
Well, we send, we send that information with the bills.
Okay.
So we do send stuff out to families.
Bert?
Problem at the end of the school years with unpaid balances. Did we solve that problem after, at that time? Does it still exist?
What, all right, I'm assuming you're saying because I was on the board?
Excuse me?
I assume you're asking because I was on the board at the time?
Yes.
I don't, I don't know. I have to go back and look and see. Plus what year it was, because for the last couple, two years and a half. Two years, families haven't had to pay. So that's probably 2019. So I'd have to go back and look.
I'm not looking for that precision. I'm looking for, was it, was there a policy that came forward as a solution? Does it exist today?
I don't believe so, no.
Somebody. The problem still exists?
Yes.
It is.
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
There was a dress, I think statewide in 2019. I've pulled it out of my reading, but it kind of went right off my memory, but I'm pretty sure it wasn't only our town paying for it. It was because it was so bad across the state.
Yep, correct, it is.
Can we get an account, can this board get an accounting of where it stands now for us?
Where it stands right now? I have to tell you where it stands right now.
No, I think he's talking of policy wise and what are, what we are able to do to recoup those funds.
If we have the policy and we have unpaid balance, we gotta look at the policy.
So, so you can't, so you cannot deny students food, right? So we have to, when they go through the line, you have to still provide the food. The only thing, the only remedy to this type of solution is small claims court.
I thought we were talking not students, but we were talking staff.
Oh, we're talking students. I don't, I don't, there was no, this was students that we were talking about. The $13,000 is student debt.
Right. See, I'm not talking about that at all, Donna.
Okay.
I'm talking about the history. What, the problem that we had back there was staff not paid. So.
So we have added.
No, go ahead.
So. Yep, go for it.
I might go up there though.
I don't know that there was a policy change, Bert, but to my recollection, I know that part of that situation resulted in adding to our exit protocol for any staff at the end of the year that they have paid up any outstanding lunch bills. So at the end of every school year, that's part of the requirement before staff leave for the summer, that they have squared away their bills if they have any with the cafeteria.
So we have a solution?
For the staff, yes. To my knowledge, we're not carrying any existing staff debt. Part of that was figuring out how to communicate to the school, to the cafeteria system. So we just needed to address that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
So you need a motion on this, right? Can I ask about their contract?
Is this, this isn't something we wrote up, right?
No, no, this is something from them. They give us a contract every year.
It's a template from the state of New Hampshire, though. From DOE.
It's not my favorite template.
It's not mine either.
And because I'm probably just speaking to a wall right now, I would say that their template includes an index that has sections. However, their sample contains articles. And so with acronyms that are not defined. So if this is what I get, it's what I get, but.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's something they send us and they have to kind of piece it together to make a contract.
That, that's.
That's exactly what they did, yeah. Exactly.
Is there a motion to approve these school lunch increases? Is there a second? Any discussion?
So we increasing the lunch for the full breath, like number one, is because they're gonna charge us more money, obviously? Is that what, yeah?
Yeah, it's helped to defray the cost.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I, I would say, well, yes, on this, I just, I'm a component. I just personally don't feel like kids should pay for breakfast when they, or food when they come to school. It should just be included with the school personally, but, which was the one highlight of COVID. They, state or somebody actually paid for it, but, yeah, that answers my question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Stained? Okay, that brings us to the FFA vote.
So the, the Future Farmers of America are looking for your approval to attend the annual New Hampshire FFA State Convention in Bretton Woods. That is March 29th through the 31st of this, this year, coming up this month. The attendance will include an overnight stay, it's actually two nights, at the Mount Washington Hotel. Eric and I both support their request and would ask for this to be approved.
Okay, is there a second? Any discussion? They all are service proud every year.
I know.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Stained? I wish them the best of luck and I hope they have a wonderful trip. School climate and culture update?
So last month, the board was, was talking about wanting to do a survey. And one of the things that I find with survey, right, you have people that are either really angry that answer it or people, or you just don't have people that answer it, right? They say, well, no, no one's gonna do anything with this survey anyway, so I'm not even gonna bother. So what I've been doing is I've been speaking with the company, and Kerry had given me the name, the Center for School Climate and Learning. They are actually gonna be coming to our, our district on March 27th to present to my admin team. And what they do is they do is something a little bit different, right? So they actually take the time and they meet with the staff and they meet with the students and they get feedback from them. So it would be something where it's not Donna or any of our administrators going to them and asking them what they think of the school climate. It's actually an outside person that comes in and they meet with staff and they have these conversations with them. And then they pull together a, a packet that shows what's going on. So what they do is they, they work with school leaders and they invite diverse groups of, in each building, we have their own. It's like an elementary school, a middle school, high school students, and they help work through this climate, the school climate. They call it a school climate leadership team is what they call it. And the students learn to work as partners with adults as they take on roles of action research in school climate, as school climate leaders. After collecting the data and learning about the school climate and culture, the teams, the teams will use this data to set school improvement goals. They create action plans and then they initiate the action projects to help drive the school to have a better culture. They also will present to faculty, they'll also present this data to the school board. And it's all driven by a, a group of people. So like what he said is when you walk into your cafeteria, you look around and you say, okay, we're gonna take a child from this group, we're gonna take a child from this group. So it's all different groups of kids that we bring together, different staff that we bring together. They come in, they have this conversation with staff. There's no administration in the, in the room. And they listen and hear what the, the staff has to say. They ask, you know, what are some of the good things that are going on? Some of the things that we want, you know, we want to look at and say, these are really good things that are happening in our school. And then we say, okay, what are some of the things that are not so good? And what are some of the things that we'd like to see change? And so they are, like I said, they're coming out on March 27th to give a presentation to our admin team so we can get more information. This, this company is actually used at other school districts in New Hampshire. And so I've been reaching out to the school districts that they use and they seem to talk very highly and have seen dramatic changes. And they say, there was one district, I actually called the district that was, that they worked with that was not in New Hampshire because I wanted to see, you know, because New Hampshire, and I wanted to expand out. New Hampshire said they were doing good, but they had finished a project with someone. It's a two-year venture. Within two years, the culture in, has, had really changed in the district. And the administration there said their scores actually went up 11%. And that was without even doing anything for that piece. That was just based on the school climate and culture.
So, I'm sorry, I'm looking over your shoulder to read your notes to make sure that I heard correctly. So a team is coming in to speak to your admin. And then are they training students to work with our staff to have these conversations?
So, so there'll be a team that'll come in from this company and they'll work with our staff. And they'll work with our students and they'll form a team and they'll help them through all this, this whole process. They'll come out once a month for 90 minutes to meet with each individual building and each individual team. So they'll meet with teachers, they'll meet with students, they'll meet with administration. And then they'll teach them how to all work together and they'll have work sessions. So they'll look at, they'll look at the data and say, okay, what are some of our goals that we want? And they, they'll say, okay, we want to change this about our school. And then they'll, they'll start to dive in and say, okay, what are. And then they'll, they'll start to dive in and say, "Okay, what do we need to do to help change this?" Right, they, they get feedback from students, so you'll have students actually talking to other students, getting this information. So there may be students sitting in the, in the cafeteria, talking to other students about some of the issues that they feel that is, that is going on in the building.
I, I have a little bit of hesitation, number one, asking our staff to take on another leadership, um...
This is strictly volunteer, they, and staff do get paid for, staff would be paid for any work that they do with this, so. But it's not, it's something
I'm not saying, I'm not saying don't, don't do it, or they shouldn't come out, I just, I just want to make sure that this is what we need to do to get the answers that we need. I love that it's an independent, at first I thought it was, this company was collecting the data and then we would just, it's like an audit, we would get the report back. So I just find using our staff interesting. Tim?
Yeah, I just feel like it's, it's over complicated, it's not what I'm looking for. I want, I want a survey from every employee in their own writing or whatever, in their own words, what they think needs to change in their district to make it better.
Whether it's behavior, whether it's, uh, feeling that they have, you know, the, the board has their back, whatever. I, I'm not looking for solutions from another company. I'm not looking for your staff to give the surveys, I'm literally just looking for surveys of employees of what we can do to make things better.
Yeah, but part of that is
And I'm also not looking to spend money, because I'm sure it's not for you.
I mean, do you have any idea how much, before I continue on, and?
Well, I, it's an expensive program, but it will be grant funded.
I just don't, I just don't, I don't see it, it's, I mean, I'll write, if need be, I could write the questions up and you could give them to the staff, like, it's really simple.
Yeah, but this gives a more comprehensive look. I, I, I know what you're looking for, but they can email you anonymously, probably, is what I would recommend. And you can just ask for everybody to send you that. Like, this is more of a, a comprehensive look at the school, which goes to what we've been trying to do, which is not just, like, we want immediate impacts, right? So that's what we're talking about, behavior, from my perspective. But also having a full-blown breakdown, because there might be something that we're missing that they may not fill out on a five-question survey. And you can't make them all fill it out anyway. So you said all teachers, but, like, you'll be lucky to, for the participation on something like that. Historically, like, back when I worked, it was just like Donna said, you get angry people, or, or, or apathetic, and then a few people that are altruistic and will type it in, but you're not going to get a comprehensive feedback. You're going to get angry people, and you'll find a lot of, because it's voluntary, a lot of people are apathetic and may not even do it.
I, I like the ownership of, of culture and climate that this program potentially gives. Do we sign a contract with them? Can we try it and then?
Well, right now, it's just them coming out to speak to our team.
Okay.
So it's, so we haven't, I haven't signed any contracts or just, I just want, because I want to make sure, this is not something that, you know, I'm just going to say, "Hey, this is what we're going to do," right? I'd like the admin team to have them come out and present to the admin team to see if this is something that they, that they're interested in doing. And we may even say, you know, once I, once we really talk about it, we may say, "Well, can you come out again?" But, you know, "We're interested, but now we want you to talk to our staff." Right, to see if this is something our staff is even interested in doing, right? Because it takes, it is going to take some of our staff to do that, right? And we, and one of the things we're not going to do is say to staff, "Okay, you know, you need to do, you need to," it would be, who wants to, who wants to be on this? Who wants to take part in this? And I think you'd be surprised, because when it comes to do with the changing of the school climate and culture, I think we'll have a lot of staff that'll be interested in doing it, because we have a lot of staff that would really love to change the climate and the culture in, in the buildings. And if they get a hand in helping through that, I think they would.
Why can't we do both?
Well, this company, they, they had said to me that they would do a survey.
He said, "We can do a survey," he can do both, he can do a survey in it, but.
Survey is what property are accurate and whatever, others is, you know, what their questions are and how they're framed. You can frame a question to get the answer that you're looking for. I'm not looking for that. I'm looking for the person who writes it down themselves. So, I agree with Tim, I agree with Steve. If it's grant funded, the only cost is the time that we put into it with staff. And otherwise, writing it out on a piece of paper and compare notes.
Well, it's grant funded, but it would be money they were taking from something else.
If we can't change the environment, we can't retain teachers, and we can't educate the children. So, if all of this is boiled right down to the sap, what's the first and most important thing we've got to do? We've got to stop the behavior, or control the behavior as best we can. I know you can't control it, because I was there a long time ago. And, uh, we, we've got to, those are things we've got to put the lid on, to some extent, in order to improve. So.
And it's really giving the students and the faculty the opportunity to have a voice in the change of the culture and the climate, right? Looking at it and saying, "What can we do to make this change?"
That's why, Donna, I'm saying both. We get the whole story.
So, it's certainly worth the March 27th.
Yeah, and I can let you more inform, fill you with more information.
Yeah, yeah. Um, okay, joint school board meeting with Croydon.
So, the superintendent of Croydon has requested a change in the date. They have, they would like to meet either May 4th or May 25th. Our regular scheduled meeting is May 25th. So I'm thinking that, because we have the 11th and the 25th. So I was thinking that you guys would rather just go with the 25th, since it's already a scheduled meeting date. But I didn't tell him that, I wanted to wait to hear from you.
Is that going to be a public meeting or a non-public?
Public. It's a joint meeting.
Will we have an estimated tuition amount for them?
They already have their, they've already been given all that, they know what their tuition rate is in L.R.
Um, any concerns with the 25th? Where would we like to do it? I don't, I
It can be here.
It can be here, okay. I'm, I'm okay with the 25th.
Yeah.
Would you like an official motion for that?
Um, I don't know if you need an
I don't think we need to, but I'm okay with the 25th.
Okay, I'll let them know, the 25th?
Okay. Um, that brings us to election schedule, so, um, we, we have a vote. Oh, I'm sorry. Is there something wrong with the 25th?
No, I just, the location, I know that we're starting some of our renovation work, and I didn't know when.
Well, it's going to be in Newport.
In Newport.
Yeah, okay.
So I just wanted to clarify for people.
That's good to know.
I just got pulled on that recently, so.
Okay.
I just wanted to communicate.
Yeah. So we'll make sure we clarify that at a time. No worries. Okay, so, uh, voting is, uh, next Tuesday, the 14th, from 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. in the Newport Middle High School gym. No, no, it's okay, I was just looking at what was handed to me. So, um, it is required that there be a quorum of the board present the entire time that voting is occurring. So we need to set a schedule so that we can all, so that we can have a quorum, so we can be in attendance. So that's, that is what I need to confirm tonight, so. Bert? What can you?
If a school, uh, it's going to be important to listen to the city of where I'm supposed to. If a school board member is absent or unable to perform his or her duties for all or any part of the day at any school district, the election, a school board member is authorized to appoint a school board member pro temp to perform his or her duties. If one or more board members are absent or unable to perform their duties and have not appointed school board members pro temp, or if the school board member pro temp is absent or unable to perform his or her duties for all or any part of the day, the moderator is authorized to appoint school board members pro temp to perform their duties. That makes it simple. There's got to be three of us in that building, um, for the whole day. And that means, uh, one, two, three, or whatever the combination is. But that the, the board member can appoint someone, rather than the moderator. That has been something in the past that has been overlooked. That makes it easier. So I guess if you're going to go to lunch, you're going to find somebody to leave behind, and, uh...
Well, the district provides lunch, so you get to stay.
You have to stay, Bert. Does the, does the appointed person need to be a community member?
Yes, and registered voter. And, uh, so, we can, you resort to shackles. Whatever it takes. Now, I go from the beginning to the end.
Okay.
One.
Okay. Steve?
Come on, overbid me.
Free lunch.
And dinner.
Oh, and dinner, ooh.
I don't remember how I told you, I didn't know, because I thought my friend was coming in town. They're coming in tomorrow night, so, I'll buy a week. So, uh, that's his last day here, he's coming on Friday to Tuesday, but so either, I can, like, I'd like, either like to have, like, where I can go out to breakfast with my friends that are coming down, or go to dinner, whichever works. I'm, I'm agreeable.
Can you go to dinner?
Yeah.
Okay. So what time would you like? I'll cover, I'll cover that part of it.
For dinner?
Yeah, so I, I, I know that I can be there from 3:00 to 7:00. I'm trying to figure out if I can get any more time in the morning, because I'm going to have to take off work.
I, I, I'll be there first thing in the morning, so.
Okay, so 8:00 until 1:00?
Now, Steve, you can, you can appoint someone to fill that gap. You don't know anybody.
Just, so, we're not doing anything secret, Tim just said he doesn't know anybody.
Unless you're going to try and offer
He has no friends to help him.
I'm a hermit, and I like to stay.
Well?
His only friend will be there.
Well, you, you had said you have something going on, and, uh...
Yeah, I mean, I typically have something on Tuesdays between, like, 2:30 and 5:15, but I can change it if need be, so. Because other than that, I plan on being there the whole period of time, except for that. But if that won't work, and, or I can't find someone to cover it, I'll just be there.
You're working, right?
This is awkward when you haven't submitted your time to your employer.
We're watching right now, you know.
Um, my, my thought process in this, although I will be honest, that I have not requested my time yet, because I was waiting to see what times I needed to cover. I will definitely be there from 3:00 to 7:00. My hope was that I could leave a little bit early and maybe make
That coffee.
2:30, um, and maybe come in a little late. But I want to see where the holes are, so when I go to ask permission to leave, I know exactly what I'm asking for. Or I will appoint somebody.
I'll be there, I'll do 8:00 till
8:00 to 3:00?
Yeah.
Okay.
Then I can cover
What can you do for morning?
I get there at 8:00.
You can get there at 8:00?
Yeah.
Until, you said you have something at 2:30?
I typically, yeah, I typically have something in the morning at 3:00, so.
At 3:00, so 2:30? So then what I will do is if you guys can be the quorum in the morning. I think my odds are pretty, I'm not going to say that.
I've got an idea.
Yeah?
We have a student who can learn from this experience. It is no cost to the district or
He's only 17.
17, he's not a registered voter.
That's not the look of this
He's like, yes.
I will, I will, I will
As I look out into the public I see, I think, three, just like a big row.
I, four, my shift
I appoint Mara.
2:30?
She, she, she comes, she comes in to relieve the moderator, when the moderator leaves, we just need to get more time out of her.
Mara, you do enough. I will try to be there at 2:30.
Without her, is, by the way.
If not, I will appoint. So that covers us
Yeah, if Mara loses appointment, if you come back, I'll
I'll come back either way, so, yeah.
It's all good.
We've got a person back at the end of the wall there that volunteers for stuff like that.
I'm ready.
What time will you be back?
Um, I'd be back, I like, 5:15.
So we're good, we're good. Sorry, I just want to make sure. All right, so Bert, you're there all day, Tim, 8:00 to 2:30.
And possibly 5:00.
And then 5:30 to 7:00. You're 8:00 to 3:00, I'm 2:30 to 7:00. Okay?
But I can also stay longer.
Okay, if things don't work out for me, okay, thanks.
I'll submit my time.
8:00 to 2:30?
Is, is Steve?
Tim. Tim is 8:00 to 2:30.
Yeah.
5:30 to 7:00.
Yeah, I did that.
Steve is 8:03.
Most all have worked.
There's a gap, though. Because you have eight, you have
Says be there, doesn't say have to wait.
3:00. You're missing one person from 3:00 to 5:30.
Going around, making sure there are pens. And, uh, and if nothing else in the literature can be there, you're just going to pick that up. It's easy.
Okay, we have one, yeah, that I missed.
I think it's like 3:00 to 5:30.
3:00 to 5:30 when Tim is gone.
Well, that's what, if he gets, I'll wait.
Okay, all right.
We'll figure it out, we'll make sure.
I mean, that's the time.
Worst case, obviously.
Yes. Okay, so Steve will cover that gap.
Can you appoint, like, when do you need to appoint someone? Can you appoint someone that day? Or does it have to be, like?
The statute is
Statute doesn't tell you when
Is silent on that.
I believe the moderator could actually swear someone's name.
I, I assume that it can be any time. It was just a replacement.
Can you, you know, also, like, appoint me, because I live in the house and work as a voter, but I work for the school, so
Doesn't matter.
Not for that, not, not for that, yeah.
I think you've just, I think you've just been appointed from 3:00 to 5:30.
Okay, all right, then it looks like we're covered with not having to appoint anybody. Okay, at this point, the scheduled change is for us to go into a brief, non-public, because there is action to be taken, so I move that we
I would like to pull that back. With the discussion we had here, I think we'll be okay doing the non-public as we had it.
Okay. So, that would be another adjustment to the agenda, which is to, uh, remove the non-public now and just have it at the end. Is there a second?
Second.
I need a roll call vote for that. So, uh, Tim?
Tim, you're aye.
Bert?
First voting, senior, aye.
Steve?
Steve, Morris, aye.
Jenna Darling, aye. Okay, new hires.
You missed Gina.
You know, my maiden name is Zabreski, so is this a test?
Yeah.
Open, open board.
You just say the first name.
Get an open board.
You missed one.
I missed, oh, I, I missed one, sorry. I missed, I will get to, excuse me.
Point of order, sorry.
Point of order, thank you. I missed, open board, and it's, it's an important one. So, there are only four of us here. We do have one open board position as Bill resigned. Um, it is our duty to appoint a board member. Donna, you were telling me that the questionnaire that the board created several years ago, that if people are interested, is available at the SAU.
Yep.
Can they also get it via email if they
Yep.
email somebody?
Yep.
Would that be?
Well, they can, if they email Melissa Small, msmall@sauf43.org.
Okay.
Or call.
Or call.
Call.
Or if somebody's interested and they want to contact one of us, we can get you the information as well. But it would be an appointment by the board, um, for one year, which would bring us to the election of 2024. It's a great, as I say every time, it's a great experience to, you get a full year on the board before you decide if you want to run, so that's how I ended up on the board. Bert?
We've got to figure out what this means to us, this is a RSA vacancies. And under Roman 5, any vacancy which occurs between the beginning of the filing period and the district election shall not be filed by official ballot. by official ballot until the annual district election the following year.
Can I ask?
So we're just going to be careful.
Diane, what was your question?
Well, I'm just wondering if there's a, if someone gets written in on the ballot, how that would affect things? If you have someone that got like ten or fifteen votes?
Because that, well, if, if somebody was written in, the two open positions for the board are the three-year that Tim is running for and the one that I am. So if they were written in.
Who'd be for that?
It would be for those two.
Okay.
But if there was a significant turnout for a write-in candidate, I think it would behoove the board to try to contact that person if we were appointing someone.
I run one once that way. I got sixteen votes, I was adopted.
Sorry, I just want to read this one more. Any vacancy which occurs between the beginning of the filing period and the district election shall not be filled by official ballot. So then I, I still think we're following correct procedure to appoint somebody.
Yeah.
So I would say that I would encourage, I would encourage people to be on the school board. I wish it wasn't just the two people that are currently holding those seats to be the only names on that ballot. I really think that's a shame. So if you're interested, if you have questions, you can certainly contact any one of us. We need to set a deadline of when we will accept applications so that we can bring those individuals, I'll speak in the plural, out of optimism, bring those individuals to a meeting to introduce themselves. So how long are we going to keep that open?
Do we accept Bill's resignation?
Yes, we do.
At this point?
Yes.
Or do we do it? Okay, so do it, do it before.
Yes.
Okay. So moved.
Wait, we've already accepted Bill's resignation. This is how long do we keep the period of time open that we let people submit their interest to being appointed to the board?
Come on, that's statute.
No, I don't believe so.
It doesn't actually give you a time limit. It just says you have to appoint. Because our next meeting is what, two weeks?
Because there was an issue with this before you were on the board. When there was a vacancy, the board did not fill it immediately and you brought it to our attention.
If you don't do it, the selectmen have to do it.
Correct, but there's no time limit in the statute.
Okay, I just want us to be cautious so we don't make a mistake because I would like to see us get somebody on the board and stay.
I agree.
So we have a meeting in two weeks, correct?
I wish my calendar wasn't on the phone. Okay, so we're in March. So our next meeting would be the twenty, yes, the 23rd of March. And then we are into the 13th of April.
So maybe we should interview and vote on the 13th of April, provided we have candidates in between there. Gives us time to, because we usually interview them prior to or not?
Yeah, we just, it's less of an interview that we get, we get to read their responses and then we invite them to a board meeting to introduce themselves to the public and to us. And then we make it.
I'm going to throw a wrench in here because unfortunately I will be out of town April 11th through the end of April.
So then that brings it to May, or you have to trust our judgment?
No, I'm just, I mean, if you are fine.
We can send you this stuff, too.
Yeah, you could, we could send you this stuff and you can.
Just zoom in.
Well, you think I have to zoom in?
That works still the last time you zoomed in.
Whatever works best for you.
All right, if we, if we still use, if we still have Zoom, then I'll just zoom in.
Yeah, that's always an option for us, yeah. As long as a quorum is at the physical location.
Okay, well, then don't worry about that because we have Zoom available, so.
Okay, so then that would mean, let's, let's do this. Let's keep. Would we like to make a decision on the 13th? Or would we like to close it on the 13th? Because there's only one meeting right now in April.
Probably make the decision if you, if you have. Because that's about a month now, correct?
So why don't we close it on Monday, April 10th? That gives us time to review. We'll make a decision April 13th. And then the appointee would start at our May meeting. Because the fourth Thursday in April is spring break. You all can meet. I don't want to meet that week, but I don't want to. Is that okay?
Can we send a notice out to people who signed up before?
Yes, I think that would be appropriate.
Send a notice.
Send a notice to the people who applied before.
They may not have their address, I may have to send them.
One I can just throw in the backyard and the other one you know, right? So we can get you that information. Except for Tim.
Yeah, around you.
Okay. I know, but I'd really like to know people's last names. Marsinkowicz?
Yeah, that sounds right.
Okay.
You got it.
All right, that brings us to new hires. This new hire, it would be Ms. Christine Marsinkowicz. I'm just going to read this, is this okay?
Yeah.
We the new guidance counselor for Richards. She comes with experience as a guidance counselor in another public school setting. Another amazing find for Newport. She would come in at an MA step thirteen, the salary of $53,566. That would be prorated to $16,793.66. I will make that motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? No? I will just say that Ms., I'm going to say Christine now because I can't remember, I said her name wrong. Will be replacing Jenna Brown as a guidance counselor at Richards. So I'm glad that we will be having a counselor at Richards. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained? Great, thank you very much and welcome. Goes back to you.
Thank you.
Okay, resignations?
None.
Any committee report outs?
Monday, the, it went before, our increased cost request went before, for the CTE, went before the finance committee. Was it the finance committee?
No, not the finance.
No.
Capital.
Oh, the capital, no, funds for approval. So the good news is, is when the state education, is he the director, is that his title?
Commissioner.
Commissioner, oh, thank you, the commissioner. It was a very well-oiled machine. They didn't really, weren't too concerned. The bottom line is, they're not concerned about Newport. It's in the governor's budget for the 1.5 million with inflation. So it's good news. It still hasn't obviously been passed, but it's set up so that it looks like we're going to be able to continue on without making any more cuts to the CTE. Hasn't passed, but it did get through the committee.
Very good. Okay, any other committee report outs? Okay, no policies committees, most committees are pretty quiet right now until after the election. That brings us to communication. Donna, do you want to go first?
I just wanted to say good luck to the staff tomorrow. I will be there cheering you on. So that'll be fun to watch.
It's for the dodgeball tournament, not school?
No, it's basketball.
Oh, bas, I'm sorry, basketball.
Tomorrow is basketball, yes.
So there's a journey to dodgeball.
Next year I will participate in basketball. I'm short, but I can still do stuff, I guess. No one will come near me. So I want to say good luck, actually to both teams. I think it's going to be great. What a great way to bring our kids in our district together. It's not just the students from the high school, I mean, the staff from the high school. It's actually staff from all of our buildings to have the opportunity to participate. So that, that's great. Sarah is the coach of the team, so, so that's. So that's pretty exciting. I want to just give a big shout out to our staff. I know things are, are not as easy as we were hoping they would be. We have some students that have some behaviors that we're really trying to work through. And so we just, I want to thank them very much for that. And I want to thank our bus drivers for all that they do. We have very committed, long-term bus drivers. One of the things that I really would like to do in Newport is to keep people long-term. And we have bus drivers that have been with us long-term and I would like to keep that. So that's what we're going to be, our next hurdle. We're going to be fighting that battle, but that's okay. We'll, we'll do well with that, I'm confident. And just thank you to my team and thank you to Melissa Small for always being there to help support me. I feel like I'm like saying a goodbye speech, but just thank you to everybody.
Anybody else on that? Tim, do you have anything?
Sure, I'll be quick. Yeah, I just want to thank teachers and the staff for all their hard work. We know none of this is easy. It's crazy. It seems like every time I come to the school, it's Shannon's putting out fires or Dave's putting out fires or someone's putting out something that's crazy and hectic. And me and Steve obviously talk more than, you know, when we have board meetings, but we just seem to talk a lot about how hard it is to be a teacher and the responsibilities and stuff that we put on our teachers and all our staff members. Because it's not just, hey, let's teach math today or teach English. It's all those behavior things you're dealing with and all the other crises that, you know, our kids are dealing with outside of school. I'd really like to see us just keep working forward to making our community as a whole better, which will help our school as well. But mostly, I'll thank you to the bus drivers and everybody. And this bus barn thing is just a small bump in the road. We're all committed to, we're here for the right reasons as for the town of Newport, residents and the students in Newport in particulars.
Bert, do you have anything?
I think I said enough tonight.
Steve?
Nah, I appreciate it. Looking at the behavior, you know, as I always do, parents, guardians, it's team effort. It's your, you know, your children, your students. We're fortunate enough to educate them and just help us do that by enforcing positive behaviors and treating people with genuine respect. Thank you.
Bert?
This is the first wonderful school report that this district has had since at least the 1980s. I could not believe, as I opened it to the index and it listed page numbers, that there were actually page numbers. So you didn't have to, oh, I've got to go to page 36? Where the hell is that? It is succinct. It is a wonderful document. It'll be, and so what more can I say? It's perfect. It puts the rest of them to shame. If you go in your library and pull them out, there's no comparison. So this is what we need to do as a district. Some people call it the extra mile. I call it just doing your job. But I guess it must be an extra mile because either that or the prior administration couldn't walk.
I do want to say that they are available on our website. If you would like a hard copy, we have them at our SAU office, but they're also located in, at the library, at the bank and other area, other area businesses.
That's a soft copy, that's not hard back.
Okay.
Will have it at the election, will be.
Yeah, oh, yeah, they'll definitely be at the election.
Okay, so I will round out the evening. So I know that the bus barn topic is, is not an easy task. But this board will move through that. I also want to echo the thanks to our bus drivers for everything that they do. I also believe Donna and I both said at the select board meeting on Monday that there are things that we could have done better. I stand by that statement and I will operate on that statement moving forward despite my frustration over the situation, that I will try to do better as well. And we will continue to be, keep the public in the school informed about how we're moving forward. This is technically the last meeting before the election. So I've served on this board for three and a half years. It's been a privilege the entire time. I've learned a tremendous amount. And I think if you could have ever told me that I would ever serve as an elected official, I never would have believed it. So I'd like to thank the town of Newport for giving me that opportunity. That being said, I do encourage everybody to go out to vote next Tuesday from eight to seven at the middle high school gym. I don't care if it's snowing. I don't care if it's snowing because I think our proposed budget is really important for many reasons. One of the most significant, I think, is the support staff contract. I think it is a really good contract that supports really vital people that we need day in and day out. And so I, according to my phone, the weather's going to be really awful, but I just encourage everybody to do what they can to get out and vote. With that, we do have a non-public. So I will move that we enter non-public under 91A: colon, three, Roman numeral two, Roman numeral two A, which is not on this page. But yes, it is. The dismissal, promotion or compensation of any public employee or the disciplining of such employee or the investigation of any charges against him or her, unless the employee affected, one, has the right to a meeting and two, requests that the meeting be open, in which case the request shall be granted. As well as under D, which is consideration of the acquisition, sale or lease of real or personal property, which if discussed in public would likely benefit a party or parties whose interests are adverse to those of the general community. Do I have a second to enter non-public? Okay, we need a roll call vote. Tim?
Steve Morris, aye.
Jenna Darling, aye, you trained so well. Okay, thank you, Stephen, for coming tonight and thank you to everybody else. And we will see you all after.
Oh, you won't be?
No, I'll be at the L S.